City Council and quite a bit on tonight's agenda. So I appreciate your staying late to work through all these issues quite a bit on your agenda tonight. What we have here is a review and the solicitation for the next steps in the planning for Hood River's first ever police facility. Hood River has never had a perfect, purpose-built police facility. Said departments have, the department has shifted from one downtown office space to another. Similar to a doctor in a hospital or a teacher in a classroom, policing is a specialized profession that benefits from a tailored space. The department is currently housed in the daylight basement of the city's 100-year-old city hall in a space that used to be a pull-through for fire engines. The space lacks secure and IT-equipped interview rooms for suspects, soft interview rooms for victims, or professional meeting space for attorneys and prosecutors. It also lacks ventilation for evidence processing, emergency power, or safe vehicle ingress egress onto State Street. The first, the city first identified a purpose-built police facility in the mid-1990s, when the city of Hood River was 40% smaller and had, was just catching on as a national tourist destination. The second effort to build a fire, police station was along with the fire and EMS. It was going to be a joint public safety building in the mid-2000s, but ultimately voters were only asked to build the fire station on Myers Parkway. The planning effort for a first-ever police facility resumed in 2018 with the notion that it would give time to determine, to have a preliminary design and cost estimates in case the city council wanted to forward to voters in 2022, the option to extend bonding authority from the fire station so that no one would see a difference in their taxes from one year to the next. The city council hired McKinsey Architecture in 2019, the same architects that built the fire station. They did a space program to estimate what the city's space needs are. We took, project team took facility tours to see what modern policing facilities look like and the functionalities that they have. And then we moved on to site evaluations, ranking seven sites across the city and ranking most highly the Columbia lot. After getting to this stage in the process, after about a year and a half in, the Hood River County, which had done their own planning for a public safety building in 2015, but had also abandoned that project. They had passed their public safety operating levy, putting them on more stable footing, and they were able to express interest in potentially engaging with us on joint capital facility planning. But their commissioners were not able to give a firm commitment until the scope and the cost of the project were known. With that information, the city council directed staff to create a joint solicitation for two projects. One being a joint city-county public safety building, which would include a courthouse and, so we can get price, price and scope for that so that the county can know whether or not they want to join us in that effort. But then also because this will be the same pool of candidates, architectural firms, also get a proposal for Project B, which is just a continuation of our existing process that started in 2018, moving forward to preliminary design and cost estimation, but adding on the components of a parking garage and also office space for Columbia Gorge Children's Advocacy, which has recently changed their name to Safe Space Children's Advocacy Center. So issuing this sort of compound solicitation is a time and cost savings for us and allows us maximum flexibility to move forward in either case, should the county choose not to participate with us. Some of the sort of most important components of this solicitation is it clearly communicates that Project A is the priority for the city if the county chooses to partner with us. Notes that the addition of Safe Space Children's Advocacy Center and that downtown, an increase to downtown parking availability is the goal if, if the courthouse is located downtown and specifically if we move forward with the Columbia lot. I've also moved facility tours ahead of space programming so that everyone can get up to speed on what the state of modern facilities are and how, and sort of learn the functionalities before we start planning what our space looks like. And then also vendor selection is separated into two rounds, only asking for cost proposals after we've had, after the evaluation team has had a chance to meet and, and talk with the, the potential proposers and to shortlist them. And the reason for that is, you know, there's only so much understanding you can get through on, on written paper. And so I wanted to have the ability for us to meet, have a two-way conversation so they really understand what we're wanting before quoting us a price. There's also a fair bit of public involvement, both general public involvement, so any and all comers, and also targeted focus group-style invitations so we can proactively reach out to groups that we want to talk with. And I've put in there that could be behavioral health or, or Nextdoor or a community group like that, but it's really open-ended and it could be wherever, whoever the city council thinks needs to have a proactive invite-style engagement into this product, to this project. As far as fiscal impact, Project A is basically starting from the beginning, although we have a lot of work done in our, in each agencies, city, county, and at Children's Advocacy Center, each of us have already put a lot of work into our space needs. So we won't be fully starting from scratch, but we will be starting the process from the very beginning. So that, and that project is going to be for a building that could be, you know, anywhere from 60 to maybe even 75,000 square feet. So obviously that project will be much more expensive, but it will also be split in cost between all the partners, including even the Urban Renewal Agency, if it includes a downtown parking increase. Project B expected to be much, much smaller in scope, continuation of our existing work, around maybe 15,000 to 17,000 square feet. And that would be split between just the city, the Children's Advocacy Center, and Urban Renewal. This solicitation in no way obligates the city to pay for any costs of the potential proposers or to move forward with either Project A or Project B or move forward through to construction. However, questions about what the potential cost of future construction buildings always seems to come up. So I included some tables in your staff report and I'll be ready to talk through what a final building could hypothetically cost and what that would look like to taxpayers if the city council has questions about that. But mostly tonight, we just want to know, did the solicitation meet the city council's expectations from September 28? And do you want us to move forward issuing this or make adjustments? And with that, I'll answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you, Will. Does anyone have questions regarding, you know, specifics to what is written on the proposals for? I mean, we know, we know where we are. We've got an A and a B on these solicitations. We've read through what those solicitations would be. So do we have specific questions about those solicitations and how that would work? Just for the logistics to ask Will, I think we should just start with that first. Gladys?
Yeah, I just want to ask this question of, you know, say that we were all in agreement to move forward with something with the county, but that we give the very clear direction that that is done collaboratively with community partners such as, will you mention, you know, mental health services and what that would look like? I guess what would that look like, Will, if we all decided to move in that direction?
Yeah, so that would be, there's, so that's mostly in the, in the design phase, which for Project A is multiple steps down the road. Well, and there's also touch base on the space program itself. But it's all going to start off with, you know, our first communication with the architectural firm is going to be during their proposal creation process. That's why I put it into two steps. So we'll talk to them about really what we're wanting to see, and then they're going to bring their expertise to saying how they think we could get at that goal of engagement to the, to the right parties. So then they're going to build that to their proposal and their costs, and it's going to be part of the scope of work. Then there'll be a kickoff meeting with the project team. That'll be another place to reiterate who we want to engage with and when. And there'll be some process going into the space, space program section. So it gets, you know, but as we saw, that's mostly just spreadsheets of numbers where really, where the rubber is really going to hit the road is during preliminary design. And that's where we actually get into flow, floor plans, design aesthetic, and some of the more programmatic elements of the structure. And that's where we have, we, right now, we really just needed to say budget for. But we'll have all the way from now until that preliminary design to guide them as to who they need to engage with and how.
Here's the part where I feel like while I understand what you just said, at the same time, I don't because I understand that originally it's just to talk about the facility. But I keep saying that when you're talking about the facility, you're already assuming that the facility is going to be X big to accommodate X amount of staff. So I'm just going to be blunt and brief, guys, that I am not interested in pursuing a city police department on our own. And this is not a priority project for me for the year, for 2021. I would consider moving forward if the county is on board and that from the beginning, we are stating we need to have all of these folks involved with the city and the county from the beginning. So being mental health, different programs that the designers are working with community partners to help guide them because right now, the way that this is being designed is basically will by you or Jeff or other folks. And I, I need to hear from community partners that are saying, that are guiding and directing you guys on this is going to work because of this, or this isn't going to work because of this. So I feel like leaving it up to consultants is not necessarily the, the best. So I appreciate the staff's time into this, but this is not a priority for me this year. Thank you.
Okay.
Actually, wait, hold on. Sorry, one last thing. And for my fellow peers, as you are about to make decisions, I would like to just have you take a moment to think of the words that Ms. Petzing just mentioned to us all. We are all elected officials. We have all been put here by our constituents. Ms. Petzing is not the only community member that has stated what she did this morning or this evening. And I would really encourage you all to think about, are you willing to put the time and effort and your name onto this?
Okay. Others? Questions for Will regarding the specifics? That's where we were starting, which we did. And then Gladys got her things answered and then gave her where she is. Others? Does anyone want to go?
Are we, sorry, are we done with questions?
Yeah, yeah. If we're, I mean, if no one has any specific questions regarding the proposal, then we could go with thoughts. So if you want to go with thoughts, we can do that now.
Okay.
Megan?
I'll try not to ramble too much.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess where I, and I've, I've talked to a lot of people and been thinking about this a lot, but where I'm, where I'm at is I don't see any way we're going up for a bond this year. Honestly, probably not even in '22, given the world. Right now, I don't think a standalone city facility is something I'm interested in pursuing right now. Acknowledging we obviously have some real needs that I think aren't sufficient for the community and how I would like the community served in our current facility. So clearly, there's a rub there. But I think it, it would be really important to this community, both in the city and in the county, for, for us to, to give it a real shot with county, to build collaboration and build partnership and ideally get to a point where we have the joint facility, ideally with also a lot of other community partners. Knowing that it's going to take, to do that well would take a lot of time. I am very open to seeing that go forward this year. I, I think kind of touching on what Gladys was going towards of, you know, in the actual RFP, I was kind of seeing this circular thing of, I know the last time we touched base with the county, they said, get an RFP, give us a number, we'll say yes or no at that point. But the RFP itself, you know, has already obviously assumed a scope of work and, and a very, you know, kind of that conveyor belt thing we've all been talking about in previous meetings. Whereas I think to do this really well, both with the community and with the county, involves this, this kind of starting, starting further back beyond just the facility of like, what are our goals? What's our vision? What do we want this all to look like? Who do we want to be in there? What are the opportunities and challenges? That, that then would kind of decide what you're building the space for versus we just take the two space needs analyses we have now and, you know, mush them together. So I don't quite know how to do it. That's the chicken and egg thing of like, the county hasn't officially said they're on board until we do this RFP and get a number. But I feel like we can get a number for an RFP that probably isn't the one I want to see actually happen, which doesn't seem super useful. So I'd like to pursue stuff with the county. I think they are interested based on some conversations I've had with folks. But I don't know quite the, the order of operations to, to move that forward where we are right now. Besides maybe just getting elected officials together to really talk about how we could do this.
Elected officials being the city council and the county commission, is that what you're referring to?
I think that would, I, I guess I'm picturing that as a first step of we could actually figure out how to do this and how to, how to do both internally to the two of us and ideally externally with a lot of the community. Like, how do we actually build a process that, that does encompass all of these things?
And I, and I want to bring one thing into the conversation just a little bit, and it's a little bit early because it's really going to be coming up in organizational updates this evening. And Rachel's going to talk about a community services presentations. And I think that that is going to be some information, a teeny bit of information that we're going to be able to get as a council about what's going on in the community, what's needed, what organizers are doing. It isn't necessarily from the people receiving those, but it will be from the people giving those services. And that is what I believe Gladys and you, Megan, are referring to some of these other services that might be able to be, benefit from this, this building, be incorporated into. So I think getting as much information as we can, and that's what you're talking about, prior to going forward with doing, you know, potentially an RFP or the RFP may incorporate doing some of that. So I, I just wanted to mention that we are going to have an update from Rachel on that here shortly. Any other thoughts? Mark?
So, um, similar, I, I think that this RFP is 80% final text. But I think that we have to have, before it can go out, that we have to have the program discussion with the county because otherwise we're just going to have to repeat it. I am interested in having that discussion with them. I mean, some of the things that I've been thinking about is like, well, you know, where does Belinda's group, is that, is that part of the building? Is, is county health part of the building? They're in an old piece of junk building up in the Heights right now. You know, all these different things that affect the, the process here. So, so to me, it's, I would suggest putting this on not dusty shelf, but just on a little block of ice at hand and, and start in earnest the discussion with the county, finding out, can we do a programming discussion so that we can go get the RFP and get those first numbers that can then feed the, the feedback loop kind of thing? I think that us doing that without talking to all, all the different parties is, is just doomed to have to be redone. It, you know, so this is nothing against the process today. I think it's just sort of saying, okay, what, what? If county, city combination or collaborative building is the goal, and I, and I think that that's the right way to go, you know, what's, how does that look? And I think that having, getting an RFP with the design firm before we have the program, you know, I don't support it. So, so my proposal is that we shell this until, till we get a mile or two on that process. So that's where I am.
Okay. And I think a little bit of that, talking about the program, such as having behavioral health and Nextdoor, as was mentioned in the RFP already, is a start. But I believe that what I'm hearing from Megan and Mark and Gladys is they would like to see something way more robust than a couple sentences in part of this. And they would like it moved to the beginning of a process versus further down the road. I just want to mention for people that are listening to that, you know, when we say we're building a physical facility because our population is going to grow and we feel we're going to need more, and I'm not going to say we need more officers. I'm going to say we need more people to help us, help people, whatever that might be. Whatever that might be, mental health, that might be, you know, whatever that might be. So this facility isn't necessarily to add more officers. There may be some more officers added, maybe, but there might not. There might be mental health people added. So, but be, being able to have a facility that is, that will work to do either one. If we need to add more officers, we can. If we need to add more mental health people, we can. So it's flexible enough to be able to do that. And I think that's what we want to get at when we want to plan a facility so that we, we aren't pigeonholed into one particular type of structure that won't work for, for numerous possibilities. And I think that's what the community wants to see. They want to see something flexible, something that, you know, we can, we can go different directions with it if we, if we decide to in the future, because who knows what it's going to be in 10 or 20 or 30 or 40 years. So I think we need to be very thoughtful. And I think people are telling, what I've heard so far is people are saying we need to take more time to be more thoughtful on the front end to make sure that we're doing that. And I know that the community has likely heard a lot of, you know, we're just going to add more officers. That's not necessar, not necessarily true. That, that isn't necessarily what this building will be for. But I think we need to be able to articulate that, that, that fact to people. So that, that's my take on what I've heard so far and where I, I feel that I'm hearing people say so far. Jessica or Tim? Jessica, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, this is probably going to be a bunch of rambling, unconnected thoughts. My apologies. I am, I understand and support what my other fellow counselors have said. I, at the same time, I'm worried that, you know, like Will said, you know, 20 years ago, we talked about this because it was something that we needed and nothing happened. And, and I don't think the current police facility is adequate. It's not serving our, is not protecting our victims, is not protecting our suspects. It's not professional. It's not serving the community. And I think it's, so if we, if we're putting this on ice or on not dusty shelf, I mean, I think the, what I'm seeing is I think we do still need to be making this a priority, even if it's, you know, prioritizing having those conversations right now because, because I think we do need to get moving on something, knowing that even if we have conversations now, it's going to take some time to pass the bond. It's going to take some time to finish the design. And so maybe we're still even, you know, three to five years out of having a facility. So I, I do think that, I just want to keep that in people's mind. I don't think that the current facility is serving our community. I do, I, and so that's where I feel like, you know, we could, you know, if, if we do this RFP right, you know, we're talking about designing a flexible space and I could see that these conversations happening at the same time. One of the things I was going to point out too, that Will has expressed is that the, when we went out for the bond for the fire department, you know, we didn't have any kind of ideas about the design. It was just, you know, let's see, this is the amount of money that we think we're going to need. And then we did the design. So that's where I, I'm still like, maybe I'm the only one out there, but I, I feel like that opportunity of that fire bond expiring is just kind of blazed into my mind. And, you know, whether, you know, we're starting those conversations now about what this future space could look like. And I appreciate, and I recognize that, you know, the mayor mentioned that Rachel's bringing back. Today, we're even going to start talking about what mental health in the community looks like. And, you know, staff is doing, starting that work and bringing it to us. So I don't know where that, I promise it would be rambling.
Thank you. Thanks, Jessica. Thoughts, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I think that slowing it down and kind of coordinating with everybody that everybody's been talking about is going to allow us an opportunity. And then this, I feel like this discussion is kind of affirming some of the uneasiness that I've been having as we proceeded through the final stages of this process where I think that the, that we weren't having the discussions that we needed to have. Certainly with, with the county, I'm fully exploring that. But also, you know, trying to follow through on some of the things that we had put in the equity resolution where we're going to like, look at and kind of, you know, kind of assess and, and re-invision, you know, what helping the people in our community looks like. So, you know, I, I think that this, you know, having an opportunity to do this more, I guess I won't say more thoroughly because obviously, you know, what was done was thorough. But I think expanding, expanding the conversation to include these other things and actually expanding these conversations to actually incorporate and discuss some of the things that we're thinking with the county, I think is going to be very helpful as well. And, you know, letting them know some of our thoughts with respect to some of the stuff that we put in the equity resolution and how, you know, how, how we feel about that. So, you know, I, I agree, you know, that we should, you know, obviously actively pursue the conversation. But I think we should do with kind of like an expanded view of what we're talking about. So it's not just, it's not just a building. It's more like, it's, it's bigger than the building. It's more conceptual about how we want to approach, approach policing in our community.
Okay, I'm going to try and summarize a little bit what I've heard so far. I don't think there's a lot of thoughts about going to version B at this point. At least not starting it right now. At least not starting it right now. Um, for the city alone. Everyone keeps, you know, talking about, talking to the county, talking to the county, talking to the county. And we could go with A and B, but um, a lot, you know, I don't, I don't hear a lot of people saying we should go to B right now. Let's just keep with the county, see what happens first. That, that's where I'm, that's what I think I'm hearing. Um, if, if we even go with A, if we even go with A, I've just heard no B right now. That's all I'm saying. Um, for A, which would involve the county, I'm hearing people say. Um, just in general, everyone isn't exactly on this page, but in general. Um, consensus is that we would like more robust conversations regarding what would be happening and other partners we could involve with this. Prior to going into space needs. You know, even if an RFP said we have one, we have A, number one, and that is the conversation piece. We need to get a contractor to help us do that. Um, and bring in all these other partners, get their opinions. And then we could go to the second portion of A and go to the space needs after we know what we want to have in those spaces. But maybe we just need to do the first part first. So am I, I, I need to see what, what do you guys think? Am I summarizing this? Potentially correctly? Um, Gladys?
To me, you are. Uh, and I, you know, want to, as Megan said, acknowledge and recognize that I'm fully aware. And I'm just speaking for myself that what the police department has now in regards to, you know, that ugly couch where victims are coming and sitting in. I don't think that's appropriate. I think we should look into some temporary solutions to try and fix that. Um, but not building a brand new facility.
For the city, okay. Can others give me more feedback if I'm summarizing this correctly or if you want to uh, say that I'm not?
Um, uh, sorry.
Go ahead, Megan.
I'll just make it clear in my own talk. Um, yeah, I guess I think, I think you are, especially for all of us combining that. I guess I, I am kind of seeing it as that we have to kind of do the first one before we can really do the second. Because um, if, if, if we do the first one right, you know, it shouldn't be the city alone that is figuring out the second half of that. Versus if we put out an RFP right now where we say, okay, we're going to do one A and then one B, but we've already kind of decided what one B includes. Has somewhat precluded. The whole point of conversations. If that makes sense?
I, well, I, I think if we, if we do the conversation piece first, then we'll know what will go into the second part. I mean, at the first part is to figure out what goes into the second part. But the logistics of figuring out a building, we just need to know what needs to go in there, how big it needs to be. We have some ideas, but I think we want to know who's going to work in there. Where maybe we, maybe we want to go in the future. How many multipurpose rooms do we need? You know, do we need seven? Do we need 10? Um, I, I don't know. I mean, I think those are the kind of questions. What other kind of service groups might want to go in with us that we haven't even asked? You know, so, so um. And I think we might get a lot more buy-in by the community if we have these conversations. And the community knows, well, we've, we have asked that group and they're like, no, we're not interested right now. We've got our own thing going on. We don't have any money to spend on it. And that's great, but as long as the community knows that we have asked the question. Then I think there'll be more supportive of a bond if they know that we've tried to collaborate with as many possible entities as, as we can. Gladys, did you have something else?
Yeah, I was actually just going to mention that if, if we're going to sell the idea of a bond. All of this has to happen ahead of time. I mean, how, how much time and energy is each counselor willing to put on selling a bond right now? When we already have what the building's going to look like and who it's going to house even ahead of time. Before talking about those who are policed by, or the, that are marginalized and that are policed by, you know, our police department. Um, we need to be bringing all those conversations in ahead of time to be able to sell a bond to our community, to our constituents. Which uh, if we did that right now, I know I, I, yeah, would be challenging.
Megan?
I guess this is totally getting into semantics, but um, you know, to what you're saying of like, okay, we want to show that we, we've asked the question. And they can either say, hey, we're totally on board or we're like, we're doing our own thing and we don't have the money. Like, I, I guess I want to build this first bit into not just like, we, we're doing this, here's the question, you know. Maybe we give you six months to figure it out, but that we genuinely build a full community conversation. Um, to say like, what can we do? What do we want to do? What makes sense? Which is where I think it's a pretty major thing to do this first bit. And our county needs to say yes to it.
Okay. Did, did you have something, Mark?
The two things, one, I, I think that we're all hitting on the same thing as, you know, some discussion before we can do this. Base needs part for, for the joint building. And I think that that's smart. And the discussion includes not just us, not just the county, but certainly those, a, as well as our partners and, and, and other things. Um, and then two, I want to, I, I think that there is a chance that we could meet. Fall of 22 scheduled for this, if, you know, for the, you know, that gives, we have. 15 months to, before we have to be ready to go to a ballot. And that's tight, but it's not impossible. So I wouldn't give up on that. And then three, no matter what, you know, it's going to be 24 before. We work, move into a building at the very, very best case. So, so I'm highly supportive of finding solutions to some of the things that the police department's been dealing with for too long. Um, if it's running, you know, a building for the, for the secure storage of stuff that shouldn't be downstairs, that's good. If it's um, if it's moving on a cold cloth, that's, you know, I, I don't have any solutions. But I think that we, this is not counsel asking the police department to put up with what you have for another five years. So, so finding solutions around that, I think is important as, you know, Jessica brought it up first and I, and I completely agree. So, so. Basically, that was a long time, a long way to say, yeah, I think you got it about right, Kate.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, I've been summarizing what everyone is saying here. Or the, you know, what I think is the general consensus of, of most of us. And I um. I agree. The atmosphere right now to get a bond through without doing some more work ahead of time. I think would be foolhardy. But. Adding the county and the city together, and I'd rather do city and county together, don't get me wrong. I absolutely think it's, would be better. But I think that the ask that would have to be made um, in this atmosphere would not pass right now. Now, if we do the work, it's possible that it will pass in a couple of years. So that, that's, you know, my caveat. If you look at the demographics of the votes for the county vote that happened, the city passed it. The city was the bulk of the votes. And. You need the county too, but you know, if we're going to go full county, it's, it's going to be a, there's going to be a big push to be able to get this whole thing done county-wise. So um, just, you know, all those things would have to be looked at. In more depth. And whether we could get a, a bond passed. But I think doing the work ahead of time. Will be helpful. We'll have more people on our side to help us get the, get it passed if we do the work correctly from the beginning. And it's going to take more work and it's going to take more meetings. And we are all of us on this Zoom meeting, going to have to be more involved, talk to more people, talk to more, uh, you know, county commissioners, have more meetings with them. So just, we are dedicating ourselves to more work um, to do this. I think it's worth it, but just know that's what, what we'll be asking ourselves to do with this, with going this direction. So I think you guys have a. Do you have enough from us, Will and Rachel, on where everybody is?
It, it sounds like the work is at the elected level um, for the next several steps. Um, and so we will uh, hold tight, be ready to work in your direction and um. And support you uh, when you've had the conversations you need to have. And uh, want to um, point out, next steps will be there to support you.
Okay. And what I'm, um, what I am going to uh, suggest, and I'm going to call uh, Mike Oates. And I'll talk to Rachel about this too, is um, potentially needing to have some facilitated meetings with the county commission. So we may need to, still need a con, contract um, to, to put that together. Um, RFP or, you know, have, have someone that we've used before to do that. Um, but I'll, I'll talk to Mike a little bit about it. Rachel and Jeff can talk and we'll figure that out.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's um. In line with what I was thinking, I'd be happy, happy to talk to the county manager that we're really talking about strategic facility planning. Um, with the county and that, that would be the ask. Along with, you know, potential community partners and social services already housed in the county.
Right, exactly. Okay, fantastic. That's where we are. All right. Thank you, Will. Appreciate it.